This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board for Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Officer Dune, can you lead us in the allegiance allegiance?
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, come on.
Mayor Foster.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Canavera here. Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Ethan Cho Han. Councilwoman McRistone.
Here.
Borough Administrator Michelle.
Here.
And Borough Administrator Hubert.
Here.
Now, we're going to swear in and of Officer Trey Wilson, Highland Park Police Officer. And then we have promotions of Officer Sean Garley, Sergeant Garley, and Alberto. Sean McGraw, oh my God, sorry. I'm not starting off well. Okay, I'll just, I'll do the first one first and I'll come back into the others. How about that? I'm gonna have our Public Safety Chair go in as well. I'm retired. Hi, Trey Wilson.
Hi, Trey Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Sow.
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 That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of office of, of the office of Highland Park Police Officer.
Of the office of Highland Park Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So, almost everyone in the room either works for or is affiliated with Highland Park. But real quick, Officer Wilson came to us in September of last year from New Jersey Transit, where he was an officer there for two years before that, two years of state corrections. Uh, he actually spent some time growing up in Highland Park and went to kindergarten at Bartle, right?
Irving.
Irving. Um, and, uh, and he had family in town forever. So it's, it's always great for us when we can have a new hire that has ties to the town, that knows the town, and their heart is here. So we're really excited for Trey to be here, and, uh, he's gonna do great things.
Thank you. Public Safety Chair. And now, we're gonna have this swearing in promotion of Sean McGraw to Sergeant. I, Sean McGraw.
I, Sean McGraw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Highland Park Sergeant.
Highland Park Sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And under, under the authority of the people.
And under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sergeant McGraw has been with our department since 2011. Um, he has been a detective since 2015. Uh, and now, um, he runs our detective bureau. He is our detective sergeant. Uh, it's a difficult job. He's immensely overworked, immensely understaffed, but he gets it done every day, and, uh, we rely on him heavily. So, thank you, Sean.
I, Al Pacheco.
I, Al Pacheco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Highland Park Sergeant.
Of Highland Park Sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
I will bear truth.
I will bear truth.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this, and in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people. So help me God.
Allegiance.
Thank you.
Sergeant Pacheco was the first officer hired, uh, along with Officer Dean. They were, they were sworn in the same day that, uh, I was promoted to Chief. Um, he was, I, I say he's the first cop that I hired. So this is, this is pretty cool for me. I'm pretty proud. He came from Rutgers. He had four years of Rutgers.
Just under.
Just under four years of Rutgers B.D. before he came down something, uh, up in Newark. Um, he grew up in Perthamboy. Has ties to this county. Uh, he's been a great asset to our department. He worked in the detective bureau up until he got promoted to Sergeant, and I sent him back to midnight patrol.
All my guys are back there. Thank you for coming out.
So, um, I'm excited to have Sergeant Pacheco, uh, run a squad for me at night. He runs a good shift, and, uh, again, like everybody else, I expect greatness.
Thank you.
Everyone, I'm just gonna have a quick five-minute break, so every, there's cake.
There's cake and refreshment in the meeting room. Out in the hallway. Please help yourselves.
And you're welcome. I'm back. We're gonna go back into session. Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the crowd and, uh, people on the dais for all their, uh, help and support while I've been out recovering from surgery and several hospitalizations for knee injuries since the Christmas holidays. Um, your help and support and just the occasional text message or, um, call really helped in during the recovery. And since today is the first day I was allowed to actually drive, I've decided the first place to go besides my office will be here for the meeting. Uh, this is Black History Month, and we encourage everyone to participate in some of the events that are occurring throughout Middlesex County in New Jersey. In particular, one I went to early on, the Middlesex County College Library has an exhibit of African-Americans in the art. Their focus is on African-Americans in, in the arts, in particular in our area. It's definitely worth a visit to the campus and library. A bit of new black history occurred recently when Allen Lee was named as the first black president of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, which forms an important part of the fabric of our town's place and role in the heart of Middlesex County. He's already moved a number of minority support organizations forward in the Robert Wood Johnson universe since becoming president, and there were events and activities weekly there. In regard to the Police Department, tonight we welcomed our new officer Trey Wilson. He is a new hire for the Highland Park Police Department. He's been working with us since last fall. We also congratulate Sergeant Sean McGraw, Sergeant Alberto Pacheco on their promotions. They are excellent supervisory officers with skill and dedication to our policy of community policing, and they've come up through our ranks and under the, under the Chief's guidance, um, with our, uh, our policies and procedures that the Chief has put in place. And they, uh, these valuable officers also fill in vacancies left in, uh, re, left due to retirement and promotion, so they have minimal impact on our budget. In the Fire Department, we all know about the fire which destroyed two of our established businesses here in Highland Park and displaced a number of tenants last week. We all alowed to the smell of smoke around 11:30, and fire operations continued in the early morning. Some of the statistics I got from the Fire Department, we had nine paid firefighters and four volunteers from our department respond. Our Police Department was also on scene and are O E M or on scene assisting the residents. Additional responding Fire Departments included East Brunswick, North Stilton, New Brunswick, South Plainfield, Middlesex Borough, and North Brunswick. The incident is still under investigation by our Highland Park Detective Bureau. Preliminary investigations are pending, but according to the Highland Park Police, it is being considered as unfounded, which means right now there is no major suspicion of any intentional or deliberate acts, but we won't know more, uh, until the detectives complete their investigation. Finally, Chief Mort Gershon of our volunteer Fire Department reports that our new engine, with request of the Cushing Estate, to the Highland Park Fire Department is at the firehouse owing equipment outfitting.
It is really awesome. And as head of public safety, I get to drive it too.
And in a formal dedication, the Highland Park Fire Department expresses our thanks to the estate for its beneficence and thoughtfulness, and there will be more formal donations for the estate in the future. Highland Park Public Library, I misrepresented myself to the council before I got here, stuck by a library. And, uh, the work is really going well. Um, uh, Mike Bobich, the executive director, tells me they're restocking now, uh, bringing over their holdings. Uh, part of the collections are being moved out of storage as we know the borough is going forward with a comprehensive roof replacement program, which will commence as the weather permits. I understand the big specs for the roof work were released today. In addition, the work for the upgrades through the request of the Cushing Estate will be taking place at the same time. The Board of Trustees met last night, uh, and the completion of this work is still anticipated to be complete by the beginning of June. Um, they feel that they're on track. In the meantime, the remote site is still open and doing events in the borough online. Um, in particular, one of the popular events has been the, uh, uh, the Books at Pino's on Thursday, I believe it's Tuesday nights. Um, it's been successful. I went to one of them, uh, back over the holidays. It was a very enjoyable evening. An electronic lending continues to increase, even though the majority of our actual home things are still in storage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'll start with a, uh, brief reminder about how the Department of Community Services, the Borough, has grocery, transportation, and online food shopping assistance. Please reach out to the staff at the Community Center at 732-819-0052. Um, also just like to announce that there is free tax prep available at the Community Center. Um, there are appointments available every, uh, Tuesday from now through March 26th. You can get your taxes prepared by I R S certified volunteers. Um, note, the program is limited to individuals with incomes up to $70,000. Um, appointments are required to make one call at the Community Center at 732-819-0052. Um, and some rec, uh, well, one rec highlight I had was, um, the summer camp registration will open up on March 1st. Uh, we're gonna have a day camp, a sports camp, a leaders and training camp, two theater camps, one, um, the youth theater camp, which will be doing, uh, Lion King Jr. and a teen theater camp, which will be doing the Mean Girls High School Edition. Um, the Givez-a-Hoot Scholarship application is now available online. The deadline to submit it is March 15th. Um, interviews of returning camp staff are ongoing. We're on track to have more than 50% of, uh, camp staff returning. Um, and this Thursday, February 22nd, there will be a summer camp job there at the high school. And last in my report is an Arts Commission update. Um, the Arts Commission, the Gorilla Art Club for Kids, will be hosting, uh, March's Art Together event at the Zimmerley Museum uh, on the Rutgers campus in New Brunswick, on March 10th, from 1:00 P.M. to 3:00 P.M. Families are free to pop in and out during this time period and work on art projects that are to be based on a few pieces of artwork from Zimmerley's collection. Uh, for more information, please reach out to the Gorilla Art Club at highlandparkgac@gmail.com. That's Highland Park G A C, no dots, no space, no, nothing, just Highland Park G A C at gmail.com. And Mayor, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to, to say, uh, thank you and congratulations to Officer Wilson and Sergeant McGraw and Sergeant Pacheco. Um, we're very, very lucky to have them, um, in Highland Park. Great officers also, uh, congrats to them. Um, I also wanted to, to welcome back, um, my colleague, uh, Phil. Um, just to point out that May 5th is the 5K, so we expect him to be ready by then, um, to, you know, take, take part of the, the, the 5K by 5.
I have already chosen my spec cake spot.
Fantastic. I'm coming right next year.
From the first step of the fire engine.
Um, uh, before that, though, uh, Main Street is, is, the winter markets are opening up at Main Street. These are Friday afternoons from 11:00 to 4:00. Um, they opened up last week, and they'll be open, um, uh, through April for our winter markets. They're a little bit smaller than the, the summer former markets, uh, but still filled with great stuff. Um, so please, uh, check that out and go to, um, mainstreet.org, um, uh, for that. Um, uh, if, uh, the, the Neighborhood Preservation Program is kicking off our, our third year, um, we are currently looking for volunteers, um, who live in the district or work in the district around Woodbridge Avenue, um, uh, to be a part of our Stakeholder Committee. Um, uh, it's a great opportunity to get involved, uh, with, uh, some, some really good work, uh, that we've been doing up on, on Woodbridge Avenue, uh, to, to sort of help businesses and, and residents out there. So if you are interested, um, you can email me at mple@hpborough.com, uh, if you are interested and, and live up in Woodbridge District. Um, so Phil mentioned a, a, a bit about this, and, and with deep sadness, we're, uh, mourning the loss of Jerusalem Pizza and China Lee, um, in, in the fire. Luckily, no one was hurt, um, in this, but these are, are sort of two institutions that are sort of foundational to Highland Park. They've been around forever. I was in a, I was in a meeting today, and, and somebody went to Rutgers, um, 20 years ago, and, uh, was saying, "Oh, I used to go to Jerusalem Pizza all the time." So it's just, this is something that's sort of always been here. And so we certainly hope that, um, Phil, uh, and gets back on his feet as, as, as fast as he can. And, uh, we're willing to express that as, as well. Um, um, and then lastly, um, you'll notice that one of the reasons that I gave my email for the MPP, and the reason for that, um, is we are losing, um, our, our assistant, uh, Borough Administrator Emma Von Dune, who is, um, uh, moving on to the evil empire of one of the Brunswick's. I'm not sure which one it is. It's, uh, north, north.
The good one.
Northwood. Um, but, uh, but, but, um, it will forever be the evil empire of me because they stole Emma away from us. So, um, it's a great opportunity for her. It's absolutely the best thing that she can do, but she has been fantastic in so many different ways. Um, particularly, I've worked really closely with her, with the MPP program. I mean, she literally just calm head, makes things happen, um, and, and, and she will surely, surely be missed, but, um, uh, she's been a great, great hire. Very lucky to have her, um, and we will miss her. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Canavera.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Health would like to remind everybody to keep up to date on your vaccinations and boosters. All the numbers for respiratory diseases are at a low in Middlesex County right now. They are still with us. They would also like me to point out that it was the Board, the Department of Health that advised the closing of Irving, not the Board of Health. The Commission for Universal Access would like to share a new program in New Jersey. All parents of newborns can use a little extra support from a nurse, and now New Jersey families have welto, welcomed, uh, any New Jersey family who has welcomed a newborn into their lives, whether through birth, adoption, or as a resource parent or kinship caregiver, can receive support that they need as they navigate the challenges, joys, and adjustments for parenthood. Whether this is your first child or one of many, every parent can always use a little extra support. And Family Connects New Jersey is ready and willing to serve everybody. Family Connect is being phased in statewide. It may not be available in all counties yet, but it is available in Middlesex County. Their mission is to support the well-being of all families by delivering care from specially trained registered nurses in the comfort of the family's home. During the Family Connects New Jersey visit, nurses assess the health of both the parents and the newborn and offer valuable information during this important transition. Covered areas can include feeding and sleeping tips, connecting parents to helpful resources in their community, or assisting families recovering from the tragedy of a stillbirth. You can find more information at www.familyconnect, connectnj.org. The community fan, Food Pantry is open on the second and fourth Thursday from 9:00 A.M. to 10:45 A.M., and again from 6:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. And also on Saturday following Thursday from 9:30 A.M. to 10:00 A.M. Um, the Highland Park Givez-a-Hoot Food Pantry is open every Tuesday at the Zone 16 Center from 10:00 A.M. to 11:00 A.M. Both programs have seen a sharp increase in people in need. The Human Relations Commission meeting will be held tomorrow by Zoom. You can find the link on the Borough website page. The Mental Health Commission is still looking for new members interested. If you are interested, you can reach out to me at tcanavera, S T A C A N, sorry, V E R A at hpborough.com. And lastly, Middlesex County will ho, will be holding a such Second Annual Resource Fair. It will be held April 19th at 9:30 A.M. to 3:30 P.M. At the Middlesex County Courthouse at 65 Bayer Street in New Brunswick. And it will be a great chance for you to be able to get information about the different resources available in our county. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'm Lamson, your person, show the Public Works Committee, uh, just a few updates. So we got a big snow, uh, this weekend, uh, and I think surprising. I was looking at the news reports, and, uh, it looks like that central Jersey was in a band of really deep snow. I mean, everybody else around us got four, five, six inches, and we collected an 11.2 over in New Brunswick. So really considerable, very fluffy. Uh, and, um, I really just wanted to commend, uh, the Department of Public Works, Mike, Mike Wazorgawitz, a great job with the snow removal over 31 miles of roadway. And so I have the Police Department for being out there and keeping everything under, under, under control and, and orderly. Um, it was, uh, you know, it was a big to-do, particularly after the storm uh, that preceded it, and it left, uh, a lot more ice and more traditional, uh, uh, wintry stuff on the ground. Um, so, uh, it was great to see the next day, and I hope everybody was able to get out there and enjoy the, uh, the fluffy snow. Just a couple reminders, if you live on a designated door parking with a snow-covered street, please make sure your vehicles park from a proper side of the street when snow is in the forecast. And by the way, everything I'm saying is available at www.hbborough.com. Uh, sidewalk clearing, in order to have the most successful snow removal efforts, including, including living up to our reputation as a walkable community, um, residents and commercial property owners are required to shovel their sidewalks and walkways once there's some measurable amount of snow. So please do so, uh, help a neighbor out if you, you know, if you can, uh, but it's really important to keep those sidewalks clear. If you notice a sidewalk that's not been cleared the following day, you can report a concern at www.hbborough.com. If you, if you or a neighbor needs assistance in clearing walkways, the Highland Park Department of Public, uh, of Community Services compiles and distributes a list every year of people who have expressed interest in helping others with snow removal. And again, that list can be found at www.hbborough.com. And if you don't get updates or any of these, any of this information, sign up for Nixol, please, uh, for, for, for Nixol, uh, Borough Alerts, uh, again, at the Borough website. It's easy. You can get text updates, you can get email updates, and it'll really keep you in the loop. Uh, Sustainable Highland Park has had a busy, uh, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, so first, uh, just, you know, putting out volunteer opportunities. Um, uh, Sustainable Highland Park in conjunction with, uh, the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group conducts regular trash pickups. Glove, bags, and other supplies are, are provided. Uh, they need volunteers. Sometimes, sometimes they get one person, sometimes they get 50 people. So it really just depends. The next cleanup will take place from 10:00 A.M. to noon on Sunday, March 17th. Location to be determined, uh, but it will be available as the day approaches. Cleanups are typically scheduled for the first Saturday and third Sunday of each month. And I'm going to give a website, www.sustainablehighlandpark.org. You can, uh, visit there, uh, follow them on Facebook, also to, uh, get more information about when these cleanups take place. Um, also on May, also on May 5th, uh, is not only the, the, uh, 5, the 5K, but the Street Fair. And at the Street Fair, uh, uh, Sustainable Highland Park will be back conducting this Earth Day, uh, festival. And so, uh, last year it was, uh, uh, North Third, uh, and we are going, we're, and we're gonna do a similar, uh, tech, tech demonstration with, uh, you know, EVs, other crafts, information about, about, about sustainable living, information about how you can protect the environment from, from, from your own home. Uh, and we had a kickoff organizing meeting last week on February 15th. And if you're interested in helping to plan our Earth Day celebration, uh, uh, please reach out to highlandparksustainable@gmail.com. Cleanups, we talked about that. Adopt a Drain is another program that's run through Sustainable Jersey, Sustainable Highland Park. Storm drains collect stormwater from streets and they're transported to local underground waterways. One-off can carry litter, debris, and other pollutants to the drains. The stormwater sewer system eventually runs into our waterways. Litter and debris can also cause drains flooding local streets. Residents can adopt one or more storm drains in their neighborhood and periodically check when needed and remove litter, when needed, to remove litter from the top of the drain. Learn more and sign up at www.sustainablehighlandpark.org. Also through Sustainable, we have been, so Sustainable Highland Park is, you know, was born from our partnership with Sustainable Jersey. Sustainable Jersey, you might see, you know, we get certifications from Sustainable Jersey that indicates our commitment and our actions, our actual firm actions toward creating more environmentally sustainable environment. And that includes all types of things, the types of materials that we use, not using rock salt when we're, you know, not allowing for rock salt on our sidewalks, you know, for during snow removal. And other things, part of it is communications, and that's really important. So part of what we're working on with Sustainable Highland Park is reaching out to our apartment complexes to reach our renter community, which is 60% of Highland Park, in order to make sure that the, that their buildings are getting the notices that they need for everybody to benefit from. So to make sure that we find those public spaces to do important community notice posts, postings, make sure that management is aware to notify residents of signing up for instant notifications. So residents can be, you know, up to speed on what's going on in the borough. News of the Borough, things like, you know, when the new grocery store was canceled. This is important, really important stuff that is not, and we know that in a perfect world, you can't reach everybody, but this is a really good effort to try and make sure that our apartment conferences are routinely catching the loop and can create kind of an institutionalized mechanism for reach out, not only for good news, but also for emergencies. Mayor, I'm sorry, I know this is a little long. The Borough's meter replacement program continues with 2,246 meter exchanges completed and 75 meter exchanges scheduled through the end of this month. There are roughly 600 meters remaining to be exchanged, and a total of 92 Sabbath meter appointments have been scheduled to date. A total of 262 Sabbath meters have been installed to date. Tonight on the agenda, you'll see a resolution requesting funds from the County Open Space Recreation, Farm and Historic Trust Fund, $85,500 for the Felton Avenue Tot Lot. This is a matching fund that will go toward making improvements on the Felton Avenue Tot Lot. If you're aligned with the Mayor's committee, reestablishing our pocket parks, which are, you know, really important to the fabric of our neighborhoods and making sure that everybody has a place to, you know, have passive recreation opportunities. And then finally, many congratulations to Officer Wilson, Sergeant McGraw, Sergeant Pacheco on their well-deserved promotions or appointments. We were looking forward to working with them chief. I can't believe your first day, your first hours were for Pacheco with Dean.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good start.
It's a good start.
That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just, one thing that Councilman Hirsch mentioned, the DPW and the snow removal was fantastic, but I also wanted to mention someone who I had no idea plowed the entire part of 4th Avenue, North 4th, and all the way around to Madison. They picked up a snow blower, we woke up in the morning, and someone had plowed all the sidewalks for us. So that was, whoever that is, thank you very, very much. Really, really appreciate it. Out of nowhere, everything, both sides of the street plowed by some anonymous volunteer. So that's you, so thank you very much.
That was great. Send that person over to my house next time. I've just reminded our Council President, there was a question that was asked, and he has the answer. He just forgot to repeat.
I do apologize. Yes, I did.
Well, I'll end the suspense.
So per our ordinance, we mentioned, I mentioned rock salt in the report, but per our ordinance, per our ordinance, rocks, because we did get a question at the last council meeting about whether we are able to use rock salt or not. So per our ordinance, if we're not, rock salt is prohibited on sidewalks. The rock salt that we purchase is for the roadways, but you can find our, you can find our ordinance on the Borough website, www.hboro.com. The stores have plenty of pet-friendly, environmentally friendly snow melt that you can use. And in fact, a lot of it already is. So, you know, stay away from the rock salt. It damages not only the sidewalk, but it damages plantings, dog's feet, you know, our poor pets when they gotta go out. And it leaves a mess. So, and the runoff is pretty dreadful for our sidewalk. Thank you.
Borough Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you. I want to say, Highland Park.
Borough Administrator Jover.
Just very briefly, Mayor, I wanted to point out Resolution 12F on Consent. The resolution authorizing termination of participation in the state health and ethics plan item. It sounds like a serious resolution. It is a serious resolution. Just to update everyone, we have been looking at alternatives to the state plan since early last year because we had two very significant rate hikes in a row exceeding 24%. We got a proposal, we were close last year. We do have a strong proposal from what's called the Central Jersey Health Insurance Fund. They offer Etna, which now the state plan is once again offering Etna as well. And so I've asked you to consider this resolution tonight because I think we have a good proposal, and the state requires a 60-day termination notification. We still have a few questions that need to be resolved to all of our satisfaction. And so what I'm asking that we do is if you're willing to pass a resolution, we will hold it, not send it down to the state until the staff and myself have had a meeting with the HIF to answer a few questions, as well as resolve any of these outstanding questions. So I just wanted to give you all that background. I apologize, we didn't have a work session in advance of this meeting where I could have explained this in a little more detail. It's about a 5% savings. I would have liked to see more, but it is a savings. And they offer quite a track record of stable rate increases. So for all those reasons, and, you know, I'm inclined to go in this direction, provided we have all of our questions answered to our satisfaction.
Thank you for the clarity. Okay, now it's time for me to give a brief report. There is a delightful story in The Star Leisure, and it's about an 11-year-old girl who had a great idea for government and government institution that she took very seriously. Cia Malhorta of Livingston, New Jersey. She saw a little library in the airport in Anchorage, Alaska, and she brought her idea back to Newark and to say, would this be possible for Newark to have a free library too? Well, her mom encouraged her to continue writing letters to the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. She even assisted her in writing these letters. Cia sent her emails, and she made many phone calls initially, but no one responded. At some point, she reached Christina Kelly of Westfield, a customer service experienced liaison, who helped her with her idea. The children's library, the children lending library at Newark International Airport in Terminal A is now open. And it opened this week, and it was all because of a little girl had a great idea. She saw someplace else, and she decided that her home state should have a free lending library as well. And these books, these children's books can be taken onto the flight with kids, and they can have the book while they're in flight. What a great idea. I want to encourage Highland Parkers that if they come up with great ideas that they can share with us, and these are Highland Park residents of all ages, to share their great ideas with us. And we can take their ideas and prepare trial. If they come with their idea and with a budget, we want to hear it. We want to see how we can improve our little town, Highland Park, that small town with a huge heart. So bring your ideas to us, should you have them. That being said, the Borough of Highland Park Partner Grant is now approaching. We are accepting applications until Monday, March 5th. Park Partners Grant accept proposals in five categories. The environment, arts, culture, or diversity, safety or universal access on health and wellness, or Highland Park High School students in classes/club projects. The grant applicants are asked to participate in an exhibit of applications on Sunday afternoon. This will be Sunday, March 17th, where the residents will vote on the top choice in each category. The winning application in each category will be awarded $2,000 for their complete proposal. You can find Park Partners Grant application on the Borough website, or for more information on Park Partners Grant, please send an email to our Public Information Officer, Harry Glazer, at hglazer@hpborough.com. One of my constant goal is to bring more services to our residents. And in that spirit, I'm pleased to recognize the efforts of the Office of Assemblymen, Robert Carrabanchek, which worked with my office and the Community Service Center to bring New Jersey Motor Vehicles Commission Mobile Unit to our community center parking lot starting on Monday, March 5th through Monday to Friday, March 8th. Hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the NBC staff will have residents to obtain their real ID or car registration. If you have any questions, please call the community center. And that's my report, and thank you all for listening. Let's play catch up now. Now it's time for our first public discussion. Total time allowed.
I noticed that there was an approval of minutes.
There's nothing, no?
There's nothing.
Okay, just wanted to be sure I was on the agenda, so I wanted to make sure we didn't.
I see that you're paying attention.
Thank you.
Now it's time for our first of two public discussion. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak to an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor and time and indicate when three minutes have lapsed. She will give a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone, or if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand button and press start on on your home phone keypad by select or select your raise hand button. And for anyone in the audience, if you wish to speak, please come up and let us know. Tell us your first and last name and your address. See that there's none, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, we have one hand up, and we have nine attendees. Phone number ending 4445. Please state your name and.
Hi, it's Lois on North Second Avenue. Okay, I agree that rock salt is not safe, as was decided years ago, but here's a news flash. Dogs cross the street. They don't stay on the sidewalk with the owner. They often cross and walk into the rock salt that the guys put down. And yes, the snow removal was amazing. This tertiary street on Dennison, Dead End, is, was cleared, I think, by 5:30, 6 o'clock, and it was by the borough, not by the apartment complex. So that was terrific. I had questions on the two grants, 2-24-85 Resolution. Will the Tot Lot on Felton Avenue have you restoring it? But is there any toy to play with if a child is in a wheelchair? Will it be accessible? Even if they can roll there, they don't want to just watch someone swing? My first question, the other one is about the PSCNG. What is the capacity building grant on 2-2487? Thank you.
Hey, Lois, how are you?
Council President, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. Lois, thank you for the question, and since you were pointing out rock salt, thank you for raising that at the last, at the last meeting. We wanted to get you an answer, and I think that there is more work to do when it comes to the types of snow. The improvements to the Tot Lot will include new equipment, and of course, the Commission for Universal Access will review any plans, and we will have, we will have equipment that is, that is universally accessible, as well as additional walkways, electrical, new seating. So it'll be, you know, it's a tiny space, but we think that those improvements will make a big, big difference. So thank you for raising that. More, more to come on the, you know, the complete design as we move forward as well. So probably we'll have to see what is planned there. And then regarding Resolution 2247, the authorizing application of Sustainable Jersey for PSCNG capacity building grant. Again, you know, we talk about what we do locally to get certification from Sustainable Jersey. What that certification, what I left out in my report, what that certification provides us with is access to grants, technical assistance, and funding for things like this, which will be used to further develop the Sustainable Jersey website. So this capacity building grant is aligned with that. So the website needs some work. It's up to date, and we just want to make sure that it's functioning as well. And it's a good opportunity to clean up some of our online processes there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies. I do see another hand. Dr. Stern Cardinal. Say your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal. Sorry, using my work Zoom here. I just wanted to say thank you for the work that's gone on for the Tot Lot. I'm really excited to see that moving forward. I know it's been, you know, in the works for a few years, and just great to see progress on that and really excited to see the, you know, the finished space when it's done and all the improvements. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That appears to be all.
Okay, and now we move on to. Ordinance requires second reasoning. Please report.
Calendar your ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and for establishment cap bank, NJSA 4844-45.14 has been duly advertised. For consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit of publication are on file.
Public hearing. It's now time for a public hearing. On this ordinance, if you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone if you're on Zoom. Could you raise hand button on?
Here is someone online.
Okay.
Lois, have we needed you? Please confirm. You're up.
Hi again, Lois, North Second. Okay, so how much are you exceeding it by and on what?
So Lois, if I could try to clarify, what this ordinance does is allows us to exceed by up to 1% by basically bank, using the bank of unused appropriations for prior year. It's a very hard concept, even for me, who have been studying this for a bit, to get my head around. We pass this ordinance every year as basically a kind of an insurance. Should we have some unexpected increases in costs that are within caps? Because the state puts certain items within the cap limits and certain items without. So an example of things that are in are health insurance, liability insurance, although I think they've given maybe a one-year reprieve on that. Pension payments, things like that that we don't control. So for example, when we had a huge health insurance increase last year or the year before, I think, we were able to dip into our cap bank to basically offset that. The budget hasn't been introduced yet, so we don't even know if we're going to need to utilize. The budget hasn't been introduced yet, so we don't even know if we're going to need to utilize this cap bank. It just gives us that opportunity to do so in the future. And we'll be discussing our municipal budget using, you know, the work session. And people have an opportunity to see that as it unfolds. So this is basically authorizing the increase over cap should we need it, and also authorizing us to bank it if we don't, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That's good.
I don't see any other hands raised.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty three dash two zero eight two?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Rocco.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistone?
Yes.
Now it's time for the consent agenda resolution. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items? A twelve to G to twelve G?
Motion to adopt.
Rocco.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistone?
I just want to quickly add that I too am really excited to see the improvements at the Felton that top lot. I vote yes.
I just signed off on making sure it happens. Okay, emergency management. Now we move on to appointments. Emergency Emergency Management Council. I'm appointing Nancy Wolf for CRT member. Motion to confirm. Okay, we have a first mistake. Rocco?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistone?
Yes.
Now it's time for a second public discussion session. Time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. The Borough Clerk will monitor the timing and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those who are on Zoom. To speak, please come up to the microphone and announce your name and address. Those who are on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button and and star six to unmute yourself. Yes, it is.
Well, I just said you think you can handle 21 minutes. Maybe. I have I have two sets of different questions. I have one set about the library and one set about redevelopment plans in town. And I can I can just go through the vote group and say one, two, and I'll come back, whatever. The library. I have no complaints. I love the library. I always work the book sale. I think they do a great job. But one thing that I felt was really interesting was it posted online the timeline for the things that the like, you know, how the renovation has gone. And like spring 2021, there was the $474,000 one-on-one match, then October 23 lighting, September through December, new wiring and cable, January 24th carpet, and February 24th. And I thought it was really interesting that the roof wasn't fixed before you do all of this. What are you gonna do if the roof leaks, if it rains? When after you bring in the books, I guess you're bringing books are coming in, carpet is going down. I I don't understand. And I and I saw in the the January sixteen 2024 meeting that the the paperwork shows that the person that you've hired, the architect that you've hired to help get bids for the roof, that his letter was July 2023. I don't understand what the timeline on this is. How do you, I have with my house, if my house was leaking, I would fix my roof before I did all kinds of new renovations. So what is the story here? How did you and where where's, I guess you're going to do a bond ordinance for repairing the roof. But why is this backwards? Why is this so foolishly arranged?
Okay, well, let's answer the first question, the favorite question for us. Councilmember George, you want to answer?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll try. And councilmen, in both open meetings and in various subcommittees, we've had this discussion for probably pushing three years. But long and the short of it is, when we put in the to go back to the, you talked about the shared grant with State Library Building Bonding Plan. We did not get that the first round, which was 2021. We did get the second round in 2022 in the borough. For a proposal of 960,000, which was changed a little bit from the first and second, did not include the roof, but it included major overhaul. At that time, and for several years before that, we had been looking at the roof problem. We had at least three major repairs done, each of which was said that would probably resolve the problem. I'll talk about that in one second. We finally, the State Library Bond Program began, which was the major renovations downstairs. We had a meeting during the summer where the borough finally said, no more repairs. It's a problem. It's been a problem for too long. We have to go and put in a new roof. We must do. But at the same time, we had to spend down the bond for the improvements to the library because we're on that grant program we had to follow. So we did start, the architect put in his proposal for the repairs for the bond, and we finally, the borough authorized moving forward with it. The architect had prepared the plans, and this is a complete memory replacement. A problem that we always had was the way that the HVAC vents on the roof meet up to go into the building and what we've called and heard it over and over again, the dog houses. Those dormer shape building structures from the ground look like dormers. Upstairs on the roof, they are where the HVAC vents access the building. The vents were low to the ground. The seals around them were not well done in the first place. The repairs tried to do the best we could with them. They were found to be prime of the major sources of leaks. They would clear up in one area and they would start in another. What finally put it over the over the top, to be honest, was when the construction, think of the construction under the bond as one project and the roof as another. When we stripped out the inside, under the bond program, we found a lot more of the leaking areas because we were staring at the actual underside of the roof, not the the tiles. And therefore, we were able to identify them. Some of the leakage that had occurred, we found during the demo for the bond had been damaged by water damage. So there's some more replacement not in the body. But now the board and the borough made the decision that because of the timing, we had to go ahead with the insides, but that we would not open the library and not complete it, you know, complete the insides until we got the roof done. So the roof is coming. It's hopefully, as soon as we get the responses in, the borough awards the bid for the for the roofing. We shouldn't be in the roofing season. Can't do flat roof roofing right now because of the weather, the possibility of snow. There needs to be a certain amount of time, dry time before and then during the project. So that that's I don't like the timing. I never did. I, the few times that I've ever raised my voice to council have been about the library roof, to be very honest with you. Over the years, we just literally goes back over a decade with the problems. But that is that is a problem. It is not a very good solution in a proper building manner, but that's what we're stuck with. And we think it will work. It was discussed last night, completely with the trustees. Had a longer meeting on it than in the December meeting. Then hopefully, the roofing project will be getting begin very shortly.
And what happens if it leaks before that?
If it leaks before that, it it may, that's a possibility. But right now, it seems that everything's been reasonably controlled from the interim repairs. We were able to do a little bit more, you know, DPW's also worked on it because the building was basically, you know, stripped down and empty. They were able, it looks like there've been a few drips, but nothing major.
Oh, you're right. Which company does the ones that did the repairs?
The ones, so the original one doesn't exist anymore. And part of part of the problem that we've had is that is some of the companies have, over the years, have disappeared. The new roof will come with the appropriate full warranties and guarantees, the performance bond and the maintenance bond that are required. They will be in place this time. And so we're hoping that we're hoping that the new systems to be installed will also addresses the issue of the HVAC vents that are mounted on racks right on the ground on roof and the doghouse accesses as well.
And I know Lois asked questions about underneath the HVAC that it wasn't handled properly before, so it was leaking underneath that.
I don't know that it wasn't handled properly the last couple repairs that we had, at least to my hearing and talking with Mike and the other our DTW groups that were on the roof, looking at pictures and taking a look at it. I don't know that they weren't done right. It's that the system was very difficult to deal with with those HVAC units mounted directly, you know, on racks on roof. Without removing them, you just can't get on them. So the best that we can do is is to patch around.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, it's not the best answer in the world, but it's it's the one that we have. And I'm almost inclined to say maybe the library opening should be on the roof for the celebration.
You want to sit down and come back?
Can you you can continue with the next question?
Yes, okay. I'm 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 concerned about all the redevelopment that you are doing. You now have nine redevelopment areas, including the North Second. And I I I find it very concerning. I'd like to know what the status of Traxi is. I listened to the planning board meeting where apparently the LR what is it, LR K, whatever, whatever the planning board people are, were hired to do a report on the inclusion of seven new different properties. And I I found the whole thing kind of absurd because the seven properties are not owned by the developer. And or not, and I not all of them. I know he does own some of them. But the developer owns, I believe, all of the, almost all of the houses on Raritan Avenue. And that was not included in this report that you hired LRK to to write a report on. It seemed like an incredible waste of time and money to do that. And I then realized that I I presume the I presume that the developer is actually paying for that and paying. I was told, or you told us, that once you have a developer, the developer will pay the borough's costs that have something to do with the development that the developer's working on. I I don't understand why that report was done when it didn't include things that the developer owns and they most likely, you know, most likely will include as part of that plan. So it's sort of like an explanation of that. The other, and to me, that was when I listened to the planning board meeting, that to me was one of the elephants in the room. Why are you including property in a study that he doesn't own, including a house on Magnolia, who I I don't know whether they want to sell it or not, but I think it was four members of planning board voted that it should not be included in the plan. And it also didn't include the possible impact of closing South Third. And I'd like to know what the status of closing South Third is. I mean, I I know that I guess you know, wouldn't know it or not, I don't really care, but I'm really opposed to closing that road. And I also have said a number of times when I've been here that I would like you to get the garbage off North Fourth. It looks terrible. In fact, today, all of the garbage truck, all of the garbage cans were lined up outside. No one sits there. I've lived there. I drive past it probably every single day, and nobody sits outside. At Pinos, they are in the back parking lot. And I just think it looks terrible. It's very unattractive. It's also very dangerous because there is no place for trucks that are delivering, you know, goods to Pinos. You park, you double park right there, you turn the corner, it's very easy to rear end a truck. Plus, there are people coming in the other direction. I think it's very dangerous, and I think it's ugly. It's unused. And I think so I'd like to know what the status of closing, I know you must be closing in on, you said there was a 90-day period. You must be closing in on that. My final question is sort of related. I I saw on the Borough website that there is something called the rehabilitation of redevelopment steering committee or screening committee. I'd like to know who's on it and what they are supposed to do since they have no authority to do anything. And I don't know that you all listen very clearly when people say they don't want the street closed. They don't like the, you know, the the redevelopment plans you're coming up with. And I'd also like to see, I know you've got ABC and D and Stop and Shop, but you do not, you have not posted plans for Riverdale Avenue, Raritan, Keeneland Avenue, or now Eight Eight Ten North Second. That's a that's a lot of information that people I think would like to have. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Laura, you want to take a stab at something?
I did take notes.
Yes, I did too.
I'll pivot us down. Traxi, we'll start with that. You mentioned, basically, the the, it sounds like you reviewed the meeting where they were going over the plan and planner study of the area needed redevelopment designation for the additional seven lots around Traxi. The reason there were some in the middle that weren't included is because these were, those were already studied back when we adopted the 2005 redevelopment plan. So they're already designated areas in need of redevelopment. So the the only ones included in the study is that economical measure was the ones that hadn't been previously studied. And so those are the ones that were included. This isn't, I'm just giving you the the back the backstory there. The what the status is, we have now, the planning board has agreed to the designation. The Borough Council will have to take action on that designation. But what the mayor has been pushing for, and we had mentioned at several previous meetings, is a community meeting to show the plans for Traxi in more detail, as well as identify any amendments that may be required to effectuate that plan because the plan that's been presented includes lots that were initially in our redevelopment area. So there's going to be more discussion and visuals and presentations on Traxi before the council takes action. And that's something we've said several times previous. South Third Avenue, you're right, we're we're in the last month of a back and forth with DOT. So we are hoping we hear back in the in the first week in March. And we'll know what that status is, and Mayor and I have been discussing strategies regarding to that. I'm assuming you were referring to the Parklets on North Fourth, and I think we've heard we have differences of opinion on council on that one, so I'm not going to go there. And you mentioned the rehab and redevelopment screening committee. That was initially put together, and I don't have the composition. We'll have to get back to you. I don't know the specific members right now. The top of my head, but essentially, they come together more, it's kind of like a technical review committee that other towns have. off the top of my head, but essentially they come together more, it's kind of like a technical review committee that other towns have, where a potential redeveloper or developer who has an interest in a specific property might present an idea to this committee to get feedback on it. And that's what that, that's what that generally was intended to do. And then you mentioned, and I should mention, Mayor, we do have three hands up on the line, so just keep that in mind, Mayor. The last point you've mentioned, what about Woodbridge Plan, I'm not sure what you're referring to, we don't have a redevelopment plan for Woodbridge Avenue. And then Cleveland Avenue, the plan hasn't been drafted yet. Upper Raritan, we're very close to having a draft plan, and we will be presenting that as soon as we can. So as soon as we have drafts that are ready to go, they will be made available before they're introduced into the ballot.
Let me just, just one thing, so.
Mayor, you just, I just want to add, I want to give someone who's on Zoom an opportunity to just see that you can put that out there.
Just one other thing about the screening committee is that the developers who come in who are unsure about exactly what they want to do may request the screening committee. So the screening committee doesn't meet unless there's a specific developer who comes in and wants to have sort of guidance about, about what they're thinking or what they're planning. So it's, it's not that it meets on a regular basis and that there's, it, it meets when, when a developer or someone with a piece of property requests a consultation of that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
So, yes, we have three hands up, we're two, eight attendees. Looks like Abby Stern Cardnell, you're next.
Hi, this is Abby Stern Cardnell, I'm on Harper Street. I wanted to ask for some clarification on resolution, it was on the Consent Agenda 22483, the Safe Roots to School. I, I know I've heard about this over, you know, several years, and it says it's from 2018. Can you, and it's probably written in some of these details, but it's a bit confusing. When can we expect to actually see this happen? And I know there's several kind of rounds of Safe Roots to School. Can you give an update on, you know, I'm seeing a lot of money allocated, but when, when will we actually see something occur? And what is that specifically?
Borough Administrator. So, you're right, it's, you've seen it a long time, it is very frustrating to me how long these, these projects. We have a 2016 and a 2018 Safe Roots to School program. They're basically for ADA accessibility, crosswalks, intersection improvements, things of that nature. Both projects look very similar, just in different parts of town. And the, the, I'll just, I'm going to have to throw DOT a little bit under the bus on this one. It is extremely cumbersome administratively because the funding they get for that program is spent. And so it adds a layer of, I can't even believe, I can't tell you, to a lot of this decisions. We have to have, you know, Public Information Committee meetings on draft plans, final plans, for basically work that we would normally do as part of our roadway improvement project with, with pretty much uniform. So it's a lesson learned in terms of how I would use this program in the future. What I can tell you, it's very encouraging that we've gotten to this point and now our two projects, because we have a similar resolution on at the last meeting, are coming closer together. So one of my probably overly optimistic hopes is now that we're entering into final engineering on these various improvements, they could kind of come together, so when it comes time to actually implementing the program and bidding it out, while they'll probably have to be separate from a financial standpoint, that maybe administratively and in implementation wise, they'll come together. But we are looking, I think, if I'm being real with you, without 2016 and the 2018, there are 2025 implementation. I just got to be real, based on where I am right now. I could be pleasantly surprised, and maybe this fall, but I'm, I'm done being optimistic on, on, on that overly. I'm sorry to say. So that's, that's why these are longstanding projects, they are really important. And I think we actually were the better for these projects because some of the consultation we got on, especially the 2018 round of those, we got some really good input. And there'll be better projects for it, but it's taking a while. So we just got the amended aid agreement from the state, which allows us to basically hire the consultant to do the final engineering. So all this just takes a lot of time. I hope that answers a lot.
Council President.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much, Terry. I know it's been, it's been an administrative headache, and Abby, we've, we've been asking the same questions waiting and waiting and waiting. Like Terry said, this is federal, these are federal dollars, and it may change the way that we kind of see funding for these types of projects moving forward, but nevertheless, it is really exciting because we did, we did, we did two public, we did two rounds of public information seminars. Those, I think those are, those are available on the, on our website under.
Definitely the, I don't, they weren't all somewhere in person, so we don't have them recorded, but the, the results of the, the sessions are available.
Got it, okay, thank you, Terry. I know one of them was sensitive.
Yeah.
And they're worth watching because we, we attended an enormous amount of intersections. I mean, dozens and dozens and dozens, and all make a lot of sense. And if you have an intersection in mind that's been a problem, strong chance that that is on there. So updates to come, but yeah, thank you.
Sorry, that was cathartic. Next, I think I have two other hands, let me know.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Mary.
Sure thing.
All the way.
All right, it looks like, Lois, you're up again.
Hi, Lois North Second. Okay, um, let's start with what I heard Mary talk about. I was lingering in the mini library a few weeks ago. And lo and behold, there is an Highland Park code book that I had fun flipping through. I don't know how updated it is, but if anybody looks at 340-3, permitting conditions for sidewalk cafes, letter E. There must be clear, straight, unobstructed passage at least five feet wide at all times, which I don't see on North Fourth. H, all furniture not to exceed 36 inches in length, width, or diameter, which is not there, it's much larger. And letter I, no furniture visible, no furniture out from October 15th to April 15th. Hello, that's three violations if that is still current. Okay, let's go to grants. I had mentioned, I don't know, a few weeks ago, that your September 23rd newsletter has the photos of the news from Woodbridge Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Program, facade grants, before and the after, money spent, but the measurement for the door is 34 inches, not 36. There's a step and a half up, so no one with a wheelchair in this 21st century could get there or get in. Okay, about a year before, I was going through the Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes from July 1977. And Councilman David Schwartz, if you remember, and Assemblyman, but back then, Councilman, got four new grants for the borough, authorizing, authorized by the Middlesex County Freeloaders. A was a grant for two bus shelters to be installed at the Triangle, Woodbridge Avenue, and Raritan. And then something B, transportation for people with disabilities to work. And then a few others for paving and, and housing rehab. So I'm asking again, could new bus shelters be placed, replaced? With, because I think, I'm sure the county gets money, and I've seen the flow, and it comes from the feds to the states. What was that, 30 seconds? And guess what, I'm going to need more time. Okay, so grants, I hope we, we move into the 21st century some way, somehow. Sidewalks, I won't go into detail till another meeting. But the federal ADA talks about Code 36-207, places of public accommodation, if they're located in private residences, residences are excluded from any ADIPS. But if, unless a part of the public accommodation is located in a private residence. The exterior has to be accessible, getting back to that building on Woodbridge Avenue. Interior, exterior available, used, any part used by customers or clients, including restrooms. For century people, there are lots of people in wheelchairs. Okay, here's another state law. Law Against Discrimination, NJSA 10:5-5. Letter V, public facility, means any place of public accommodation, any street, highway, sidewalk. Sidewalk, walkway, public building, any other place, structure, blah, blah, blah. We have been known to give out grants along Woodbridge Avenue. And when Joy Norrisworthy pulled that together in 2005, it was for, open for business so that discrimination would end in this borough in this century. And they all bought awnings, and I was sitting next to her when she was going to have a heart attack. So I think we have to do a little bit better. No removal, I won't get into that right now. I'm going to ask you, is the borough still, does anyone know, inspecting one or two family homes with an inspector for a hundred or whatever, give or take, whatever the money is, when owner occupied, when selling? Somebody know?
Okay, you, you said a lot. You gave us a lot of codes for us to look at. We don't have that information right on hand, we would have to go back and take a look and get back to you. You mentioned about the NPP grant. You mentioned about bus shelters, you mentioned something to 2000, 1977 or something like that. We don't have answers to that. And then you talked about bus shelters. I know, since I've been around, those shelters were put in place. And then your next question is about code enforcement, if people are going to do COs when people move out or to do inspections. And one or two family homes, that's the question?
I, I didn't hear the last part.
That is, if, if you're asking if we're up to code and our code inspectors are doing the job of inspecting home when, when it's, the homes are vacant and it's being turned over, yes, it's being done.
Yes? Okay, here, here is, here's fire code enforcement from Department of Community Affairs. Bulletin 2010-2, oh, look at that, February 22nd, 2010. In the middle, it says NJAC 5:70-3101.3.1. States all buildings, structures, premises within the state, in dark print, with the exception of owner occupied one and two family dwellings used exclusively for dwelling purposes. And then you jump down a little bit, it says exclusively by, again, oh, property who, who lives there. One or two entitled persons holding the title. You cannot do fire inspections, they have to have, which you had, a paperwork down in the basement during the pandemic. And it's, and even in Middlesex County said, we have, we're asking for certificates. Matouchin does certificates, Piscataway does certificates. You cannot go into an owner occupied, if you read the U.S. Constitution. We're having a lot of discussion about, on the news about Constitution. And it, the Fourth Amendment, you cannot, what is it, search and seizure? Okay, the British were doing that. You can't do that on owner occupied one and two. I think I'll stop there, I have lots more, but hopefully there's more time somewhere sometime. But yeah, why don't you reread your code about the street permit, permitting, about the furniture? Not there, shouldn't be, we shouldn't be seeing it, October through the 15th, October 15th through April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lois. Just to confirm, as I said, if the property is vacant, there has to be a CO before it turns over to an owner. Just want to be very clear on that. About the street furniture, we will look into that and get back to you at our next council meeting. Thank you. Next.
Do you have another hand up?
Just one other question that Lois asked that I could address.
Oh, oh, about NPP?
Yeah, just, the 106 Woodbridge Avenue is the one that you're talking about, Lois. It's not a change of use, and therefore it doesn't require an ADA to be installed. And in addition, it was CDDG, CB.
Yes, you got the C, A, B.
DG funds, not NPP funds that were used in, in, you updated that because Woodbridge Avenue qualifies for CD, BD funds as well, so that was the, the funny mechanism that brought that. But it's not a change of use, so it does not have to have the ADA installed, so to clarify that.
Next person?
Diane Feldman, you're next. Just please say your name and address when you get hooked up and you're ready.
I am Diane Feldman, 49 North Fourth Avenue. And I raised my hand about one issue, but now I've got a few. One is, um, in terms of enforcing limits on speakers during public comment, I would, I think it would be worthwhile for you to recommit to enforcing these limits. Another question I have related, well, that was a comment, but a question I have in relation to public comment. I always understood that if people raised their hand for public comment, that people who had not yet spoken would be taken before people coming up a sec. Time, I don't know if there's an issue about first public comment versus second, but I guess I'd like some clarification on the order of appearance for anyone who has raised their hand. The third issue I have is really a question about a comment that Council President Hirsch made about the tot lot, where he said, of course, we will have the Commission for Universal Blackness. We review the plans for the tot lot. As a member of the Commission, I'd like to know when we could expect to receive these plans and what kind of turnaround you would need. We only meet once a month, so if you need some kind of faster turnaround, the sooner we've got some notification of that, the better. Just example, the playgrounds that are put in by the county in Donaldson Park are wonderful and accessible. But I don't believe, because they were county run, that there was any discussion with Highland Park as the closest town to the parks about that. I think what they did was fantastic. But if we're using that as a model for, of course, the Commission will be involved. That didn't happen there. And the last comment I have is that I'd like to take this opportunity just as a teachable moment, that someone who uses a wheelchair is not in a wheelchair. You use a wheelchair like you use a cane, like you wear glass, glasses, and that you would be in the library, in school, in the hospital. And those are just some ways to think about terminology to describe people with disabilities. That's it. to describe people with disabilities. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, as it pertains to raising of the hands, I'm not sure if it shows up in what order people who are attending on Zoom, if it shows up, say, it's person number one or person number two, does it show up anything like that on Zoom for you?
Sometimes they bounce around a little, I'll be honest, sometimes, and I don't think it's specified in our bylaws, so to speak, or our rules of order, but we could double check. I can try, it's sometimes difficult.
It's very difficult.
I get, I get, some days I'm a little more flustered, and I'm worried I'm gonna skip over someone and not go back to them, but we could certainly discuss that further, if there's a change you'd like me to try to make when I call on people.
It's challenging.
But they do generally stack up in order.
Oh, okay.
All right, Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Diane, for the question, for being here. All I can really say is, is really defer to the process that this goes through. Obviously, our engineer is gonna provide some, you know, baseline sketches, our public works, and, uh, rent departments will work on identifying potential equipment, obviously, it's very small. Uh, and then I'll work with Councilwoman Canavera as the liaison to the Commission on Universal Access, where presumably she will present that information with, with, uh, with the commission. And, uh, and then obviously it goes through the Public Works Committee before going to the full council once again. So, um, not really a timeline, but that's just the process by which we operate, so. Obviously, you know, this, this, this project has been, has been in the works for, shockingly, it's been three years, uh, and it just takes a long time, uh, but we do hope to see some, some real progress this spring. So if that answers your question, I would say within the next, uh, two or three months.
Thank you.
Now, I have two people, might as they both spoken already, right?
And now we can go back to our first attendant in person, if they've spoken already.
Okay, well, I'm back on track, see a little bit here. I think that the report that was done for the planning board was very misleading. I did not know that, um, that Raritan Avenue, the houses on Raritan Avenue, were part of a two thousand and five plan. I haven't memorized every single plan the borough has done. So it was misleading to do that report where it did not appear that any of those buildings were going to be part of it. Anybody else who looked at it, I mean, I talked to someone about it, they said, I said, you know, I know that the, um, the developer owns some of those properties, and I can't imagine he would own them if he's not gonna put them into this plant. And they didn't know what the story in that was either. I'd like to know when that LRK report is going to be posted online. And my, my one other thing is that I do listen to these meetings online sometimes. And particularly with the planning board, I kind of know who you people are, and I kind of know where you sit. I don't know who the members of the planning board are, because their names aren't posted online, nor are the names of the zoning board. And I think we should be able to know who, I don't know that you pay attention to much about what the planning board says about these things, but I, um, I think that we should know who is on the planning board. And I also think we should be able to read their names so that we know who is speaking. And I get that, and the one other thing about the rehab and redevelopment screening committee, it seems to me that that was, well, it used to exist when, uh, when non-elected officials were part of a redevelopment authority or whatever it was called before. It was resolved by the council so that you would be both the mayor and council and the developers in this town, and there would be no other voices to be heard about this. I mean, who else, who else has anything to say about the redevelopment? Even though many people are not happy about this, and I know, I know people, I know two people on Cleveland Avenue were not happy. So, um, anyway, so that's, that's, I have nothing else to say today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Mayor, if I could just, the, the planning board, I can certainly talk with the planning board, I sit at every planning board meeting. All of the planning board members have name tags that are out in front of them, but I can certainly make sure, I can certainly make sure that we do a better job of making sure that the planning board names are, are, are part of the discussion. That's not coming clear, but I do know that there are name tags that are available for every planning board member.
I know there are name tags, but you can't read them, and it would be appropriate if, as someone speaks.
Very.
I'm sorry. I know the name tags are stiff, but you can't read them. And the, um, the picture's very fuzzy, it's almost even hard to tell who was there, who was speaking. And it would be very helpful if, when someone is speaking, who's on the planning board or the zoning board, or council too, but, um, if, uh, the, the picture would go to them and you could see what their names. Uh, because it's, it's important for people in town to know, you know, who is, who is taking positions on different things.
No, you.
Anyone else? Uh, yes, I see two more hands. Uh, next is Lois. Loving.
Hi, Lois.
Do you mean to have your hand up?
Speaker.
Hello, Lois, somebody, oh, you have more to add?
Do I have more to add? Yes. I heard someone, I think President Hirsch, say, Woodbridge Avenue property was not a change of use. You're quoting the old New Jersey code, the ADA was supposed to, let's see, what did, what did President Bush say in nineteen ninety-two when he signed the ADA?
That's actually, uh, Councilmember Hale, but go ahead.
Thank you, okay, Councilmember Hale. Let the shameful walls of exclusion finally come tumbling down. The deadline for commercial was January nineteen ninety-three, all, all buildings across the state, pizza parlor, every barber shop everywhere, nineteen ninety-five were all governments, the deadline for the ADA. So we won't even go into the state, it's end of discrimination, it's very simple. Okay, um, the, um, there's a script going around that is badmouthing this public entity, that the entity that is redevelopment. I have had three people come up to me, two of them start up with, why is this borough in the real estate business? Nothing is going to happen, the redevelopment has been on the books since the seventies. Now, those are players from the nineteen nineties, have repeated this to me. And I tell them, no, it's going forward, read the minutes, look at the tracks, it's going forward. You want to keep it secret, we don't want the details, you should put it out there that Highland Park is coming back better than that. Whatever you want to say, you are hurting yourself because these people from the nineties are busy telling non-truths, and it's going forward and forward. And, and so have you, any of you heard about this, that there's no redevelopment, it's not going, it's not gonna work?
We, people always have comments to make. Be true or untrue. People always oftentimes have comments to make on any given subject. We have, we have a job to do, and that's, our main primary focus is to get our town moving forward. If it stays like this, we, the town.
But, but you're not, I don't know how you're getting it out, maybe if you have press conference, I don't know, you put it on the gossip page on the electronic thing, I don't know. Okay, so I'm telling you, there's a counter movement, and I wondered, is that why, have you decided that you're against using the vacant surface parking lot that used to be Charlie Brown's or is still the old Charlie Brown's, that that cannot be the farm market? Or third?
I think there's a lot baked into that.
I don't follow, but we are moving, uh, just to be clear, Lois, we are moving with redevelopment, we are moving on a lot of different things. Um, you've heard the conversation about the closing of South Third or the opening of South Third and place for the new farmer's market. We're looking at a pulse of different things as it pertains to redevelopment of the downtown.
Wonderful.
You, you, you mentioned that, um, we, we're not the best at communicating what it is that we're doing, and unfortunately, that's something that all government lack, because people get their news sources from so many different areas. Long goes our radios and newspapers, so we have to be creative in getting information out to folks. However, we will, hopefully next month, we will be having a townwide discussion and with the plans and doing a charrette at the, hopefully at the high school, that people can come in and they can see what the development or the redevelopment plans are. And as soon as we have, the details all hammered out, we will advertise it as much as we can to get as much public participation and community awareness out. So stay tuned. So, um, hopefully you continue to these meetings, and you can share with your friends or colleagues or neighbors of what it is that we're gonna do next when we have that opportunity to share with the town.
Yeah, acquaintances, I wouldn't say friends. Okay, I think last question, is it true the Sunoco owner has purchased three of Highland Park's apartment complexes, Highland Montgomery, Park Town House, and Orchard Gardens?
I have.
Anybody know?
I don't.
I just want to point out that we have passed twenty-one minutes of public participation.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, Lois.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, there are still some hands up there.
So we have a, a stop, drop dead stop time at nine P.M., so.
So we've got two hands up.
Have they spoken already?
They have spoken before.
Yes, we'll go ahead with these two, and then we are gonna give another five minutes on this, and then we're closing out.
Uh, okay, uh, next up is Abby Stern Cardinal.
Hi, um, it's Abby Stern Cardinal again, I'll try to be quick, I know, short on time. I, I did want to make a comment about the tot lot and the timeline. I do appreciate the, the process that it takes and the various steps that have to, that it has to go through. I am a little concerned that we're now talking about adding steps that maybe weren't there before. I don't know whether, you know, that everything is necessary, this is a very small, you know, small neighborhood tot lot that doesn't actually have much equipment, and from the plan that is in the, um, the minute or the agenda here, it, it's great, you know, I, I'm very excited about it, but it's not some big extensive playground that, you know, I, I'm concerned about adding extra steps. And as I've said before, this is for kids who, you know, these are COVID kids who haven't been, haven't had a lot of things. You know, haven't been able to go in places, things have been closed, you know, it, it all compounds. The library is closed, all for good reason, which I understand, but it's just taken, some of these things have taken a very, very long time. Again, I understand it moves slowly, but I, I really hope that we're not now talking about adding extra steps. You know, of course, let's do what's necessary, and let's make sure that it's safe and accessible for all. But if that has been covered, I, I would hope that we're not, you know, adding an additional checks that have already, you know, been covered, so that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Abby. Next.
Uh, looks like Diane Feldman has her hand up. Diane, please just confirm you are on the line.
Uh, Diane Feldman again. I just want to go back to the comments earlier about, um, trying to figure out who's who, where they're sitting in the day is on various boards and committees. And I've attended Zoom meetings where there's a practice that I think would be worthwhile here, where everybody who starts to talk introduces themselves so that, um, this not only helps people who can't read sign, but it also helps people who can't see at all. This way, they can hear the person's name in their own voice and follow them as they keep talking. And also sometimes give a visual description of what they look like, you know, that everybody participating is sort of on the same, the same footing in terms of being able to put themselves in the space. I just think introductions, you don't have to worry about sizes. Thanks.
Thanks, Diane. Um, I try my best to identify all the council member before they speak. We can pass that information along to other boards slash commissions who are on Zoom to encourage the, the chair of that committee to identify the members when they, before they speak.
Okay, but I'll say that was, I was suggesting, no, you're trying to do that, but I'm suggesting that the council members introduce themselves so that somebody who's listening but cannot see can recognize the name and the voice together.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane.
That looks like our final hand.
So that ends our public discussion. And now, uh, we're not gonna do a recess, I'm gonna move for an adjournment of our meeting. A motion to adjourn?
Move.
Our next scheduled meeting will be on March fifth at seven P.M. Thank you all for attending on Zoom, and thank you all for attending in person. Have a good night.